Welcome to the Hazel Park City Council meeting, April ninth, two thousand and nineteen. Roll call, please.
Mayor Webb?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Aubrey?
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Here.
Councilmember LaCuro?
Here.
Here.
Please stand for the implication and pledge allegiance.
Holy Spirit, source of all life, we gather together as the elected officials of our community, charged by the people, to discern our future together. We are a diverse body, brought together by the same spirit. We pray that we will be faithful to the work at hand, to set aside our own personal agendas, to seek out the greater good. Open our minds and our hearts to listen in for your will for us, and bestow upon us your wisdom and grace. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Counsel, I need approval of the agenda as presented and revised.
I'll move approval of the revised agenda, Mr. Mayor.
I have support. Anybody?
Support.
Thank you. We have an agenda. No wonder here. Special presentations introducing our magistrate, Tanya Bowers, of the Hazel Park Division of the forty-third District Court. Would you please come out?
Mr. Mayor, Chuck Gettard is here, our judge at the forty-third District Court, Hazel Park Division, and he wants to introduce Tanya Bowers, and also introduce Nadine Hatton, and request confirmation of her appointment as magistrate as well. Judge Gettard.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and counsel.
Good evening.
After many years as the part-time magistrate for the Hazel Park Division of the forty-third District Court and the Hazel Park School District Council, magistrate Jim Patterson took a full-time position as the deputy court administrator for the Oakland County Circuit Court. The result is that it started a recruiting and vetting process in the forty-third District Court Hazel Park Division to replace his very large shoes. And they are both large in terms of his stature and his shoe size. As a result of that process, on February twelve, this honorable body approved our request to appoint Tanya Bowers as one of two part-time magistrates for the forty-third District Court Hazel Park Division. Very briefly, Tanya is a graduate of Wayne State University School of Law, earning her Juris Doctorate degree in the top ten percent of her class. During her tenure there, she participated in the disability law clinic, and then went on to learn and earn her master's law at the University of Florida Levin School of Law. Following that, she then went into private practice, practicing in Oakland, Wayne, and Macomb Counties for the last six years, where her primary emphasis is in the areas of criminal and family law. Tanya began her duties as magistrate in the forty-third District Court Hazel Park Division in early March of this year, where she is currently serving now, and very busy in doing so, as well as continuing her private practice. I'd like to introduce to this honorable body and the members of the public of the city of Hazel Park at this time, magistrate Tanya Bowers.
I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for giving me this opportunity to serve Forty-third District Court Hazel Park, and as well as serve my city, because I do live here. So, thank you for that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. And then moving on to the second item on the agenda. Like I said, magistrate Patterson had big shoes to fill. And in our recruiting and vetting process, we are drawing on local attorneys that reside in the, one of the three cities, and have a good focus of experience in the practice of criminal law, and we have had experience with. And I'm also now proud to introduce and then request approval of the appointment of our second part-time magistrate for the forty-third District Court Hazel Park Division, Nadine Hatton. Nadine graduated with her Juris Doctorate degree from Wayne State University, and then went on to earn her master's of law, both magistrates will have master's of law degrees, from the California Western School of Law. But one of the things that I find so helpful with Nadine, and I believe will also be helpful in her service as a magistrate in this community, is that prior to, and actually during law school, Nadine was a teacher of Spanish and social science for the Detroit Public Schools. I have seen her speak Spanish, and while I can't keep up with her and understand it all, it sure sounded good. And following her earning of her degree with her master's in law, she has spent the last eight years also in private practice, focusing her practice in the areas of criminal probate and child neglect matters. And you won some kind of award for the child neglect matters, recognition in Oakland County, did you not?
Yes, the Sandra Silver Children's Advocate of the Year Award, from the family bench of the Oakland County.
I was very proud to be a part of that ceremony that day. So, we are now asking for this honorable body's approval to appoint magistrate Nadine Hatton to join magistrate Tanya Bowers as one of two part-time magistrates in the forty-third District Court Hazel Park Division. I introduce to you Nadine magistrate, well, almost magistrate, Nadine Hatton.
Good evening, it's a pleasure to be here before you all. While you have not yet approved me, I want to thank you in advance, and I hope to work very closely and get to know all of you, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I've known Nadine Hatton for a while, she's been a prominent member of our defense bar in this community, she is well-respected by everybody. The administration strongly recommends and requests approval for confirmation as magistrate for the forty-third District Court.
I'll move approval of the appointment of Nadine Hatton as magistrate.
Support.
Any dissension? Discussion? Motion passes, welcome. I'd like to say thank you to our honorable Judge Gettard for going through and vetting out two fine magnus and people, I believe you have, and your staff, and thank you for bringing them to us.
Thank you so very much, I greatly appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm so sorry to bother you and interrupt this, but since the judge is sitting here and standing here today before us, I want to thank him for the hard work that he puts in on the bench. He truly has been my wonderful partner in making Hazel Park a safer place to live, to work, and to raise a family. So, I want to recommend him for his innovative sentencing and the hard work that he put in to serve this community.
Thank you, I greatly appreciate that, and I think you're going to be able to see the same kind of dedication to their duties from magistrate Hatton and magistrate Bowers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome and congratulations.
Jim Patterson was my, Jim Patterson has been my friend for forty years, where did my life go? And I wish him well in his new role as a deputy court administrator in Oakland County. I'm glad to see that people from the south end of the county are now taking jobs and assuming positions of responsibility. Thank you, Helene Zach. We have Jim Patterson working for the court, we have Madison Heights Mayor Brian Hartwell working for the treasurer's office, and of course, we have our own mayor pro tem working for the county commission. So, I am so glad to see that people are influencing policy and doing great things at the county level, and I think that is a good thing for Hazel Park and the south end of this county. Thank you. I know, Helene, you've been a big part of that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any public discussion? Mr. Peterson?
Mr. Peterson. Robert Peterson, one four one West Harry. I have a request to make, but first I'd like to give a brief statement about myself. Following seven years of military service during a time when many were burning their draft cards, I went to school in Kalamazoo, Michigan, and became involved with a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization that supported home repair for people who couldn't afford it. I served a number of years under board of directors, spent three years as treasurer. When I came over to Hazel Park because I was transferred, I ran into a young fellow by the name of Ed Globitzer, who talked to me at a couple of city council meetings and suggested I ought to look into being on a board or commission. And one thing led to another. Jack Lloyd saw to it that I was appointed to the planning commission, I've been serving there for a number of years. I would like to continue my service and request that I be reappointed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone for public discussion? Closing public discussion. Counsel, approval of the consent agenda? One through sixteen.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor, with some discussion.
Support with discussion.
Okay, we have a motion with support, a dissension, a none, then we'll go to discussion. Councilman LaCuro.
All right. On item number three, three-three west nine mile. It looks like the rear page of the application's been modified. The Kyle Wales does not have a, an address. The line for residential address has been removed. Get a, look at any other of the applications on the back page.
To add to your comments, they also do not provide administrative services. They are located within the CVS pharmacist, within CVS, providing three-D scan images of teeth. So, I already had a few issues with this, but they are already operating.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem did contact me about this one. If this is the counsel's pleasure, you may delete this one from your approval process with unamended motion, refer it back to the administration, and we'll attempt to get you some more information on this. They listed themselves as administrative services on their application, that is what the building department continued to process. They did pass inspection, but again, this is, this one is a little bit different. So, if you'll, we'd be happy to get you.
I was, oh, um, on eighteen twenty-seven east eight mile spa nails. Again, under the owner's address, they list the business address.
If you wish, you may approve that pending.
That's all I have.
Do you have that written down there, young James?
Yeah, we have their driver's license, also, to the apartment addresses.
Okay.
Right, it's just every other application has provided that. Except those two. Thank you.
Apparently, we do have it, and I'll make sure that that gets written in there for the record.
Counsel personnel?
Yes, I don't know if I missed this somewhere, but item number fifteen and sixteen, I didn't find a dollar amount on what these were, and I had a question about fifteen, I have been through a lot of these for the years. Asbestos abatement is a new one, and I wanted to know what that is costing and who is going to be on the hook for it, and it's about time, it'd be my last comment.
Which one is that one?
The fourteen and fifteen, excuse me, fifteen and sixteen, fifteen is the asbestos abatement, and then demolition of four-six-zero west Maxlow and seven-three-three, West Chevlin. We're doing asbestos remediation on both, and demo.
Some that we use the grant money for require asbestos remediation.
Okay, this, this is, never seen it before, and there's been some that have come down that everybody's saying mesothelioma is a wrecking ball's heading.
That is, that is a requirement when we use the grant, or we determine that there is asbestos that is present there, that needs to be remedied.
Do we have dollar amounts for both of these bids for the items?
I can't even find these on my agenda.
I don't, I don't want to hold this up, it needs to happen.
Yep, I will. Yeah, why don't you get the bid sheets in, but?
I don't want to hold it up, I just, I was curious about that.
Okay, we will have, I will have the bid sheets for you before you leave tonight.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not in my packet.
Any other counsel personnel have any questions on the consent agenda? The motion maker want to amend his motion to delete item three?
Support.
And five just needs address.
I would, can we just approve the business with these things being cleared up, is that okay? Approve the business licenses with?
Whatever your pleasure is, you are the counsel, so.
Get the rest of the information.
Okay, you just want to approve it with the rest of the information, and it be accurate?
That would, yes, that would be my motion.
Item three as well?
Yes, both of them.
Everyone's okay? Okay.
Everybody good? Okay, I want to go one more time. Any more discussion? Dissension? Consent agenda passes.
I'm sorry, those last two items were added recently, and I don't even have them in my packet, so forgive me.
Okay, administrative reports, cost-sharing agreement with Ferndale for repairs on West Woodward Heights.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Campbell is not here tonight, he was involved in a minor car accident last night, and he is home recovering. I'm requesting approval of the cost-sharing agreement, this is for repairs to Woodward Heights, that shared portion of Woodward Heights between Lenox and Pilgrim, that part of it is owned by the city of Hazel Park, and part of it is owned by the city of Ferndale.
Counsel?
I'd like to move approval with discussion.
Support.
I didn't see in here where it says when we have to pay them? When's reimbursement due?
They're the, they're the contract, you know, they're, they're the ones, we're paying them, so I'm sure they'll, send us a bill.
And I also, because this is over by, near my house, Tom, I know you and I have discussed lane striping on numerous occasions along Woodward Heights, west of the Service Drive. Personal request, if we can, I know there's space, if we can get a right turn lane and...
It's all on the way.
All right, and maybe some good stripes? We can still see?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any more discussion on item one, from any council member? Any dissension? Administrative report item one passes. Item two, resolution zero-four dash zero-zero-nine dash one, capital improvement bond for nine mile and John R. Road. I had to wait for this one.
Mr. Mayor, the administration requests approval of the bond so that we can fix the roads in the city of Hazel Park, John R. North and Nine Mile.
I move approval of the resolution four zero-zero-nine-one-nine, capital improvement bond for nine mile road and John R.
And John R.
Support, support, support. It's about time.
Just for the record, this for three, three and a half million dollars.
Is anyone against this?
Do we have any?
No.
A, a dissension, no? A discussion? We have a comment.
I just want to reiterate, I, I've said this on numerous occasions to Ed, so just want to share with everybody, please pursue every avenue possible with additional funding sources to help defray the costs to the residents to repay this bond.
And Mayor Pro Tem, you've been a good provider of potential grants for us too, so we thank you for that.
Motion passes, thank you. Item four, sorry, item three, sorry. An ordinance to amend Title IX Public Peace Morals and Welfare, Chapter nine point three-nine, addict marijuana, dangerous products to add section nine point three-nine point zero-four-five, consuming or smoking marijuana in public places, to prohibit the consumption of smoking of marijuana in public places, and to amend Title IX Public Peace Morals and Welfare to add sections nine point three-nine zero four-six, to provide the penalty for the violation therefore, and to amend section nine point three-nine point zero-seven-zero, to establish penalty exception for section nine point three-nine point zero-four-six on first reading.
Mr. Mayor, the administration requests approval of this, this is the ordinance that you requested about a month ago, the penalties now mirror state law, and the administration humbly requests approval.
This was to just clarify for the record, so there's no confusion about what state law is in our actual local ordinance for the courts and for general public. Do you have a motion for this?
Yeah, we're all reading.
Variation for it?
Yeah, we were reading something from Friday, and now it changed on Tuesday.
The last one required jail time, correct?
And it was also a misdemeanor, the last one.
Okay, so now we're down to civil infraction punishable by a fine of five hundred dollars.
Community service and counseling.
I'm trying to make sense out of nine point three-nine point zero-four-six, the last, yeah, the last paragraph, a person less than eighteen years of age is responsible in forfeiture a hundred-dollar fine, forfeiture marijuana in four hours of completion of drug violation, counseling drug violation, comma, and is responsible for a civil infraction punishable by a fine of five hundred dollars or community service, it seems like it's saying two different things, I, like they didn't.
That is wrong.
Scratch out what they were, you know, they didn't cut and paste properly.
Legacy document.
I thought it was just a variation in severity of the crime.
Is that what it is?
Is it a variation?
The sentence doesn't read that way, I'm trying to.
It's kind of broken up.
We had one sentence, you know, a small paragraph before, now we have three. And? Yeah, we do have a magistrate.
No, actually, we'll just read again, and Melissa was in today to try, between her husband's appointments and the meeting, to try to fix this. What this is supposed to read is that the first offense, it will be a fine of five, of one hundred dollars, forfeiture of the marijuana, and the, right, and a, and a hundred-dollar fine, and then the second one would be a five-hundred-dollar fine, and completion of...
Or.
Or, right.
So, the fine could be waived on that?
Right.
So, the magistrate or judge?
The magistrate or judge can waive the fine, right.
She's nodding.
So, what we, what we need to do then is pass it on first reading with that correction, and I will bring you back a corrected version for the second reading.
All right.
And we'll note that this is a civil infraction and not a misdemeanor.
Correct.
You know, it's only a money issue.
It's, uh, it's not, no one will, no one will deprive you of your liberty for having this, but we also, again, want to have established some community standards so that people are not just, you know?
Being disrespectful.
Being disrespectful to others.
Other families within the area.
That is, that is well.
Okay, do we have an approval with that adjustment to that? Did we move approval?
I think we were struggling on a short.
No, there was a struggle for approval of it.
Right, we request approval on first reading with the amended language reflecting first and second offenses.
I'll move approval on the first reading pending the correction in the words.
Yeah, because there's some.
I'll support.
Any dissension? Any discussion? Passes on first reading with the changes that has been recommended. Item four. Another one. An ordinance to amend Title IX Public Peace Morals and Welfare to amend section nine point nine zero, zero-one-zero, selling to the minor prohibited to include tobacco product, vapor product, or alternative nicotine product of any, in any form, section nine point nine zero point zero-three-zero, notice posting section nine point nine zero point zero-four-zero to prohibit the purchase, possession, or use of tobacco products, vapor products, or alternative nicotine products by minors in public, and to provide the penalty thereof section nine point nine zero zero-six-zero, violation penalty, to amend the penalty for violation of sections nine point nine zero zero-one-zero, and nine point nine zero zero-three-zero, and to add section nine point nine zero point zero-one-one definitions are used in this section for first reading. Mr. Globitzer?
Yes, sir. This ordinance is done at a request of our school superintendent, Amy Croupy. Vaping has become a serious problem amongst young people in our community, and we felt that it was important to take action so that we could effectively address this and ensure that we try to stop the proliferation of this issue. Jared Gajos from the community coalition is here, and vaping is one of the things that they are working on, trying to prevent as well. Dr. Croupy is here in the audience as well. Again, we think this is an important first step in controlling the problem.
Have a motion to approve?
We're all reading.
We're still reading, okay.
It's a, it's a few pages. Can you tell me, does this mirror other local ordinances?
This is an amalgamation of various local ordinances that were provided to the city attorney.
So, the previous ordinance, number three, which covered marijuana, is not explicitly state vaping, but I'm assuming that's covered by consuming or smoking marijuana, because...
Right, this is.
I know.
Oh, yeah.
No, I, I think I know.
Number four, I just want to be clear, because it's specific to vaping nicotine.
It is specific to vaping nicotine and other vaping products.
Okay.
So, what this does is it encompasses vaping with our smoking ordinance, vaping nicotine or vaping other products, vaping is basically prohibited if you are under eighteen.
So, this one is punishment is a misdemeanor.
I just got to that part two.
Yep.
Which we just.
Got rid of on the other one.
Got rid of, yeah, got rid of on the other one.
I'm not super comfortable with it being a misdemeanor.
How about this? Amend first offense to civil infraction with a fine and community service, and make second offense a misdemeanor. That way, you have a young person who's made a mistake, and again, we're not putting a criminal conviction on their record, but we are sending a clear message that what you're doing is inappropriate.
That makes sense.
One thing, pardon me, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you go while I flip it.
One of the, you know, this, this ordinance covers many things. I could definitely see having a reduced penalty for possession or use of it, but I would still think that the sale of the product to a minor.
That would be correct, I would think that that should be a misdemeanor for sure.
That's probably something to hate law that we can't really.
Right. Yeah, I, I think you want to keep that.
Well, that's, that's why there's a protection in there for a minor that's participating in an undercover operation.
That's correct.
They're excluded from.
Right.
Any penalties.
punishments and-
No, I-
Just spirals. You've got the issue with, you know, raise the age right now, you know, because right now seventeen year olds, while a minor under this is being treated as an adult in court and, you know, this can affect their, their ability to go on and have a productive life.
Absolutely.
Through the chair, I, I guess I would ask, we have Dr. Croupy and Jared here and Jared, this is what he does. Do you guys have any clarification on why this language and why we should do misdemeanor over something else?
So if you look at alcohol in relation to the state, for the first offense, it's a civil infraction with a hundred dollar fine, but for second offense, it is a misdemeanor with up to five hundred dollar fine and thirty days in jail. For a third, it's again sixty days in jail, five hundred dollar fine and another misdemeanor. So for vaping, it is five times stronger than a traditional cigarette. When you are ingesting a Juul pod or like a flavor into it, it's five times level up nicotine. This is a greater risk than traditional cigarettes were in the seventies, eighties, nineties, however long. So this is something that a lot of people aren't aware of. And so by when you're putting a misdemeanor out there, although yes, I agree with you, Amy, that it is sort of extreme and kids have a future ahead of them, they have to understand that their, their actions have consequences and it can follow them. But like Ed is saying, like first and second may be civil infraction. I can see that with maybe community service, whatever it may be with a fine, but maybe third misdemeanor, because by the third time, you're not even like paying attention to anyone anymore. That's just on you by that point.
I think the other thing that we need to realize is that we have an opportunity to place that out there and then our magistrate or the courts have the opportunity to change if they see fit. We have to put some limits on our children. We are constantly being asked to place those limits when we can on our children. And if we put those limits on the children, then maybe we can be productive to stop them from doing this.
What educational efforts are we doing? Because I, I, like Jared just said, a lot of people don't realize that there's so much stronger. So people are getting sicker, not realizing the, the impact that vaping these products is having. So what education are we doing in our schools? I, I'm sure the community coalition is doing stuff, but if you can share with us what type of education to make students aware of the risk factors of doing this.
Well, you do have your health classes that students are taking as part of their junior high as well as high school, but we also have those opportunities now through the coalition that we're able to bring this information forward to them. So I think it's more information than we've had in the past and the coalition is certainly an important piece that we have that here in the school district. But I would encourage you, which is why we brought this forth, this is what communities are bringing across to us to try to prevent this. And there are, there are communities around us as well as ourselves. You can open up drawers full of this. They're vaping inside classes and places that, all, all over the place and we're having a hard time catching them. And so it is a serious issue inside our schools.
I got a suggestion to our council.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
First offense, four hours of education with four hours of community service, no fine. Second offense would be a hundred dollars fine with another four hours of education and maybe four hours of community service. That gives them the benefit of the doubt. That gives them more ample opportunity to know that what they're doing. By the third offense, it's a misdemeanor. What do you think?
That sounds reasonable.
Does that sound like a reasonable?
I, I would go with a fine.
Yeah, I was gonna say. I like, I like the idea of the fine upfront because there is a bit of punitive to that, but I would love-
They got court costs, whatever it is, but thank you for coming up.
Yeah, thank you.
...the opportunity to speak.
Maybe in the smi-
Sorry, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I know what the gentleman was indicating is correlating the statute or the law to the MIP, so the minor in possession. But if you look back to the changes to the minor in possession, it was initially a misdemeanor. And because so many young people, their records were, they were, they went to college with a black mark, it's now changed to a civil infraction. And the way I look at it is that vaping, while dangerous, does not alter the mind state as alcohol does. So I, being a former educator and a defense attorney, it's always my job to try and keep a child's record as clean as possible. So a civil infraction for the first and second with education and wherever you want to put the financial penalty would be great, but I don't think the first or second time should be a misdemeanor. Even if you have a, a child between the ages of eighteen and twenty-five, they are still eligible for HIDA. If they have a drug or marijuana possession, they're still eligible for seventy-four-eleven. So there's opportunities, even though it's a felony or a misdemeanor, to keep it off their record. So I think with vaping, that the civil infraction for the first and second, maybe as the honorable mayor has indicated, an opportunity the first time to say, hey, we want your attention. Second time, okay, step it up. And then the third time, definitely.
I think the education is the key here.
Yes.
You've got to remember, they are students and education is the key in helping them realize we've all went through, we didn't have the vast media market of the internet when we grew up. Some of us that told us, hey, you look at this and do this to your lungs, this will do that. I mean, now we have all the information at our fingertips, but helping and understanding a little more, having education and maybe volunteer, and the community service could be helping our coalition, the students working with our coalition here in town and getting the real viewpoint with their peers as to what this is doing.
Mr. Mayor, how about, let me propose this. You guys can do what you want. You're the council. A hundred dollars fine for civil infraction with four hours of education and four hours of community service for the first offense. The second offense, two hundred and fifty dollar fine and sixteen hours of community service.
Civil infraction.
Civil infraction. And the third offense will be a misdemeanor with your standard five hundred dollars and ninety days in jail.
I'd like to include, I'd like to include education on all three levels of that.
Yeah, same.
Yeah. I think the education is more the issue.
Yep. My concern with it being kind of aligned with alcohol is that alcohol also can be dangerous to other people if children participate in it, whereas vaping is not as, it's, it's not going to affect somebody's ability to drive or potentially, you know, cause severe injury to somebody that way. So that was my kind of hesitation as well. But I do agree that education and community service and the fines are, they should be mandated for sure.
Okay. Let me read it back to you and for Jimmy. We have first offense, a hundred dollars, four hours of education and four hours of community service. Second offense, two hundred and fifty dollars, both of these are civil infractions, four hours of education again and sixteen hours of community service. And then the last one will be misdemeanor and that will be the standard misdemeanor policy, I mean penalty of five hundred dollars and ninety days in jail plus eight hours of education.
Any community service with that?
Uh, we usually don't include community service over. That's up to the judge. He will make that decision.
Okay.
Perhaps in lieu of sentencing to jail.
Sounds good to me. But I really feel that the, I, I, I think the first offense, yeah, I know it's money, a hundred dollars. At least put, just put in there covered court costs. Give the young person a chance the first time out the door.
Yeah, I think we all agree on that. Nadine's correct. It was, you know, back in the nineties, it was MIP heaven. And there are people around there, there are, there are probably thousands of people wandering around Michigan with a silly MIP conviction in their background. I mean, we don't even disqualify police and fire applicants for something like that anymore because it's just, they were ridiculous. So-
I think we just put in the first offense court costs.
Yep. Well, let's do, let's do something.
Let's do court costs.
Because it's just, well, it's a fine, so they'll go in and have to pay it.
Instead of a hundred. They'll let them pay the fine with the court costs.
You got to set a fine. Can't just do cost.
Well, this is going to come back for first reading, correct?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion-
Okay.
-to approve with amending to first offense, a hundred dollars, four hours education, four hours community service. Second offense, two fifty fine, four hours education, sixteen hours community service. Third misdemeanor, which is a standard five hundred dollars, ninety days in jail with eight hours of community service for first reading. Oh, eight, education?
Like, no, eight hours, eight hours of education and that will be up to the judge in the probation department-
Yep.
-to make decisions about community service, perhaps in lieu of jail time.
Didn't put my initials after it. I apologize.
Support.
Thank you.
Any dissension to the amended motion?
I'd like to make a comment. I'm, I'm confused because under the violation penalty, a person who sells is only subject to a fifty dollar fine for his violation. I think the reason you have problem is because there's people out there selling, promoting vapor products, tobacco products. Should they not pay as a violator of the ordinance by making the sale, should they not be paying more than fifty dollars to sell vapor products to young children? I agree.
What do you think an appropriate fine would be?
A misdemeanor, five hundred.
Isn't that covered by the state law? And we shouldn't really even have that part in there maybe?
What's that?
The sale penalty. It's covered by the state law.
Well-
Sale penalty.
Tobacco product.
An establishment, a retail establishment selling to a minor.
You're correct.
Or an adult providing it to the minor.
Let's pass this on first reading and we'll come back to you on that one.
Give us clarification if that is-
And let's read it Friday, not Tuesday.
Thank you.
No, and, and again, I apologize for that. We were trying to get this on so we could move it on first reading and obviously Melissa has had some family issues.
Any dissension on this first reading along with all the changes? Hearing done. Motion passes on first reading with a lot of changes.
All the changes.
Stuff.
All the changes.
Okay. Show cause hearing, eleven oh seven East George.
Is anyone here from eleven oh seven East George?
I'm going to open up the, the public show cause hearing for eleven oh seven East George. Anyone here for eleven oh seven East George? Close the public hearing for eleven oh seven East George. Mr. Klobuchar?
Trying to find my-
Send it back.
The administration recommends that the council confirm the hearing officer's order to dilap, to demolish two dilapidated garages on the premises. You have pictures of these garages. They are deplorable. It is likely at some point in the near future, we will bring, be bringing the home to you as well.
Okay, great. Can you answer that question before it was asked?
Yeah, I went out and looked at it today.
It's pretty rough.
Yeah.
Counsel, what be your pleasure?
I'll move approval of the order to demolish the two garage structures at eleven oh seven East George.
Do I have a support?
Support.
Dissension. Show cause is done. Boards of commissions?
Mr. Mayor, due to the heavy agenda tonight and the fact that we will be having a second meeting this month to discuss a study session on medical marijuana, we will bring to you appointments at that time.
Medical marijuana or recreational?
Medical, recreational, all marijuana.
Okay.
Marijuana.
And that takes us to table items. See none. New business. May I approach him, Aubrey?
Um, so it's recently come to my attention that there's been some concerns regarding the historical commission and the building holding our museum. I know city manager Klobuchar has been working with superintendent Amy Croupy to try to resolve some of these issues, but I felt, based on what I've heard, it warranted having a discussion here at city council because this is a commission that is appointed by city council. So I guess.
Were any of the commissioners invited to attend this? You're going to bring new business that are discussing appointed members?
We're in new business. We're going to talk about the-
Yes, and everything's handed out on time. Interesting.
So this was not a premeditated?
Okay, well, what, what would you like to discuss? Because I can go through this point by-
I'm, I'm actually requesting that the city manager discuss the concerns as this is his place to do.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Again, it's come to my attention and the attention of council and was brought to me by several council members that there was a presentation made before the Hazel Park School Board with the intent of asking the school board to contract with an independent Hazel Park Historical Society that has not yet been formed or constituted in the future to actually take over housing the museum. I gave the school board members at the Building and Grounds Committee and the superintendent of schools a letter last night addressing the concerns of the city of Hazel Park with respect to that proposal. And some of the things that it outlined was that request was made without the knowledge and consent of the Hazel Park City Council. No inventory of historical commission property has been presented to the city of Hazel Park, nor has an annual report been provided to the city council as required by ordinance. All items donated to the historical commission are a property of the city of Hazel Park and cannot be converted without the consent of the Hazel Park City Council and there have been complaints in the past regarding inappropriate use of the building. So we have been, I have been, my office has been working with the superintendent's office to come up with a use policy and to have discussions about renewing the lease with the city of Hazel Park to house the historical museum. There are a multiplicity of reasons for us to do that and I believe that we will work well together and we will be able to come to an understanding and agreement and have the city renew its lease with the Hazel Park School District so that the historical museum can operate in perpetuity as it is intended as a historical museum. And again, like I said, I see no reason why we cannot do that. I went to the subcommittee last night and I clearly expressed that I don't want to fight with anyone. I don't want to fight with anyone at this table. I didn't want to fight with anyone at the table that I was with last night. I simply want to make sure that this is resolved because there are, as I have laid out, critical issues that need to be resolved before such a request could even be made. So again, this is a matter for the city council to discuss.
May I respond? Mr. Klobuchar, we attempted to talk to you about the formation of a society back in February and that meeting didn't end so well.
You did?
Yes, we did. And it ended with me leaving the meeting early after the master land use plan. We attempted to talk to you.
Well, I think-
The lease expired with the city and the schools.
So, uh, we have been, I have been, my office has been working with, uh, the superintendent's office to come up with a use policy and to, uh, have discussions about renewing the lease with the city of Hazel Park to house the historical, uh, museum. There are a multiplicity of reasons for us to do that, and I believe that we will work well together and we will be able to, uh, come to, uh, an understanding and agreement and have the city, uh, renew its lease with the Hazel Park School District so that the, uh, historical museum can operate in perpetuity as it is intended, as a historical museum. And, uh, again, like I said, I see no reason why we cannot do that. I went to, uh, the subcommittee last night, and I clearly expressed that I don't want to fight with anyone. I don't want to fight with anyone at this table. I didn't want to fight with anyone at the table that I was with last night. I simply want to make sure that this is resolved because there are, as I have laid out, critical issues that need to be resolved before such a request could even be made. So, uh, again, this is a matter for the city council to discuss.
May I respond? Mr. Klobuchar, we attempted to talk to you about the formation of a society back in February, and that meeting didn't end so well.
You did?
Yes, we did, and it ended with me leaving the meeting early, after the master land use plan. We attempted to talk to you.
Well, I think
The lease expired with the city and the schools two years ago. There was no lease. We were looking to form a society for a very simple reason: funding. We can't write grants if we have a lease with the city for a building owned by the schools. It is important that the society be the funding mechanism, nothing else. No property that belongs to the city has been given away, misplaced, destroyed, damaged, or anything else. Really, there's not a whole lot there that actually belongs to the city. Individual commissioners, individuals in the community, have donated their own materials. They're on loan. We do have an inventory, and as a matter of fact, the city was provided an inventory of what we had in two thousand and seventeen. It was given to Jeff Campbell, along with an end of the business year report. What happened to that? I don't know. When I went back to him last year and requested, "Do you want this information again?", I was told, "We're not interested." So there is, there is nothing hinky or sneaky going on. This is a funding mechanism. A society is the proper way to do that, such as Ferndale has done. When they got a brick and mortar building, they did away with their historical commission. We're not seeking to do that. We're seeking to grow the museum, and the way you do that is with money, not a five hundred dollar a year stipend.
Well, I think there is a way to, uh, to do both. However, that does require a discussion. I hardly consider our interaction after the master plan meeting to be a meeting regarding, uh, the formation of a society.
Attempt to start a discussion with two members and myself was shot down, and it ended very bad.
That is not a true statement, and in fact, there are other people at this table that witnessed that interaction as well.
There are other people that were at that meeting that also witnessed it.
At that, at that, at that discussion, which was not a meeting, I was actually called a name, so I don't, I don't consider that a meeting. I want to point out that in the ordinance, um, the acceptance of money, the historical commission shall have the power with the consent of the city council to accept donations of money, personal property, or real estate for historical purposes. Such donation shall vest in the city, subject to the control of the historical commission, in accordance with the deed, devise, bequest, or grant of such property. Gifts of money shall be deposited in special accounts by the city treasurer, from which dispersments shall be made by resolution of the historical commission, subject to concurrence with the city council. That's right in the ordinance.
And not once, not once, have we come before council for any dispersments. They haven't been very large. Obviously, the museum and the commissioners on this board have been singled out, and I personally did not call anyone any names. I was in fear for my safety at that meeting.
No.
No.
That is not a true statement. It is
That is a flat-out lie.
My truth, and it is my statement.
You may have, you are entitled to your own opinion. You are not entitled to your own facts, madam, and everything that you have said is a categorically untrue statement. You yelled at me after the meeting.
We have a valid lease with the schools, Mr. Klobuchar.
What you, can I read you the lease, please?
It expired?
The lease.
Don't need to read the lease. What's the
Such occupancy shall continue as tenancy at will, from month to month, upon covenants and provisions and conditions therein contained. In other words, if the use continues, the lease continues.
Negative. The city failed to meet its financial obligations throughout the lease. It was null and void two years ago. There's not a lawyer out there that is gonna back that you still have a valid lease.
In fact
We were looking to
I'm, I'm sorry.
Form a society for self-preservation, to continue the programs.
Madam, I'm sorry, but that is not, again, a true statement.
Yes, it is.
Uh, I have spoken to our city attorneys. Uh, the city attorneys concur with me.
Okay.
Again, I don't want to fight with you.
No, I'm not gonna argue with you about this right now. Clearly, this group has been singled out because I can't think of
Madam, you are not a victim.
I am still talking, sir. I can't think of
I'm sorry, as always, I
One other board of commission that you have taken and has shown a flashlight on with this kind, this attention is unprecedented, unprecedented. You don't go after anybody else.
I'm not going
Why this?
I'm not going after anyone.
I'm sorry. The society is illegal. It's a licensed five oh one C three. All the proper paperwork has been done. It is a legitimate, not some sort of, organization. It is a legitimate five oh one C three with the purpose of not only adding programs and resources to the museum, but physical improvements to the building, to make it more cost-effective. We're looking into grants for solar panels and wind on the property to make it a teaching location.
Right.
Why did you not talk to any of us before this? You took it upon yourself to go to a board meeting?
I did not take it upon myself. I was contacted by members of council, and I make no apologies to you, madam. You did not, did you speak to this council before you went and you appeared on behalf of the city of Hazel Park without authorization of a full board?
Hazel Park Historical Society is not under your control. It's not your
The Hazel Park Historical Commission is under the control of the Hazel Park City Council.
And nothing has changed. Nothing has changed. I don't understand where you think that we're doing something with the property there. Nothing has changed. We are seeking to enter into a lease with the people that own the building so we can protect it. I don't know where you're gonna be five years from now. I don't know where Dr. Croupy's gonna be. I don't know that I'll be around. We want to make sure we set this up for success, and the way you do that is with a long-term lease, not a month-to-month.
Then why was that not addressed with the city to do a continuation of the lease? You can't enter into a lease with a building that's already under lease with the city.
It's not under lease with the city. The lease expired. We look into that. We got a legal
It says, as long as, as long as tenancy continues, it continues. It says that in the lease. That is a matter for the attorneys to
Your attorneys and the attorneys we consulted prior to this because we were very cautious to make sure we didn't do anything improper or cause embarrassment to the city, and it looks like that was a fail.
Mayor Webb, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to suspend all activities of the historical commission until the concerns raised have been addressed.
What was the motion again?
To suspend all activities of the historical commission until the concerns raised have been addressed.
Your prerogative. Is there a support?
I will support.
Any dissension?
Yes, I want to dissent. This, I've been around Hazel Park for fifty-some years in a legal capacity. Never in fifty-some years have I ever seen where the council has a situation such as this when they know that the historical museum is as important as every other agency of the city. The planning commission, the board of review, everybody deserves the city's attention. To sit and argue whether there is a lease or not a lease, that's court decisions. The answer is coming up with a situation that you understand, and I genuinely believe it, that the city wants nothing better than the ci, city Historical Commission to prosper and do well. They want every organization. When we get into a situation, and, and I'm not blaming you, I'm here once every five months, not blaming you, but the answer's not legal. Well, you have a lease, we have a lease, Amy's in the middle of this. Tell us what we can do in a rational matter to help the, uh, historical commission prosper, and we'll do it through the city council members, and we'll see that the historical commission does well. Nobody wants
Right.
the city Historical Commission to fail. That's the last thing in the world we want.
Respectfully, I
If we're doing something wrong, tell us in a, don't, I mean, tell us, tell them, people, they're bad. This would help if you, I'm sorry.
Let me go ahead, please.
May I?
Uh, again, uh, I've had this reviewed by Melissa. I've had this reviewed by, uh, Jandrum today. Arnie is correct. I didn't want to fight with anyone. I didn't, I don't want to start a fight. But I will tell you, today, I have, I feel like I have been, uh, lied about. None, uh, flat-out lied about, like I have, I have been city manager of this community for almost eighteen years.
Ed, this is not about you.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. This is my time to speak, please.
Hold on. So I got one thing I want to say here, sir.
I believe, I believe that, I will tell you what I told you, uh, before, what I opened with, and what I told the school board last night. I don't want to fight with anyone, okay? But
I got some comments, I think.
There are important
They're important here.
provisions here that need to be addressed.
I think the statement should be that, before we had a place for the commission to go to, there really was no commission that was set on a standard pro quo organizational type situation where they maybe met once a year. So what I'm seeing is some challenges in the growing pains of this facility. So what I would rather see is that the administration set up the whole set of rules in which every commission can follow, and that all commissions must follow, and go back and teach all the commissions that this is the rules and the guidelines in which we have to portray and stay within the framework of.
That was a pretty good suggestion, wasn't it?
Yeah, we and I talked earlier.
Right, we did.
And I wanted to reiterate that, so we can get to this point. I don't think closing the facility or stopping the commissioners from doing it is going to solve the actual problem. That's not the problem.
My concern is
What concern?
My concern is, um, there have been multiple situations that have been spoken to. Um, I know that Ed has addressed with Rich Robbins and been repeatedly assured that it would not continue, and then it's continued. I'm, I'm, I'm really getting frustrated with the, it's the way it's always been done. There are rules. There are ordinances.
And I said, we need to reschedule
That have been addressed, and then they keep, continue to happen.
All the rules for all the commissions.
I don't disagree.
So they'll all be across the board so it can be better
But currently
all the way around. This board met so casual for the last thirty years that it, it didn't even hardly exist at one point.
Through the chair, we just got it, it together. I just cleaned that up. Um, one of the lines in here, there have been complaints about inappropriate use of building for political purpose. I would just note that when the lease was valid, the Democratic club meant their bi-monthly. So there have been political activities there.
Okay. I'm not going for the political activities. I'd rather not talk about it, and I'd rather just get to the point of fixing the actual problem.
I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I can respond all day.
If you guys want a little tip or tap back and forth, I don't want to keep going.
I don't want to go, keep going on with it either, but I want to say for the record that everything that I have said, uh, I believe in and is one hundred percent true.
I'm not going to go for anybody's record. I would just want to clarify that we need to come up with a solution. If we can't come up with a solution within reason between all the boards and commissions, or any other chair, uh, uh, board out there that we have to have oversight on, then we have problem.
All or nothing.
Yes.
May, may
No, and again, I think this is a unique situation because this thing, I agree, we need to train all boards and commissions, and my suggestion before this meeting is that we bring in somebody from the MML and we talk to them about what their responsibilities are. But I will not equate what's happened here. No, the historical commission is not, and those members who are not victims, they have not been singled out. This is an issue
Okay.
that has arisen as a, I'm not done, please, sir.
And I'm trying not to debate this whole issue up here.
Result of things that were done.
I'd rather just get to the solving the issue all the way around. But let's let our superintendent talk, please.
So once you have your policies and procedures in place that you choose to do, I think the Hazel Park School Board would welcome, after we have our conversation at the end of the month, perhaps a conversation with our mayor, and Mr. Klobuchar, and myself, and our board president to have a further conversation on this.
Thank you. I'd like to repeal, have this motion that just got passed repealed for closing it down.
It wasn't passed.
Nobody, okay.
We're still in discussion.
Still a discussion, okay.
You're still in discussion.
Well, since it's on the floor, I ask for a vote.
I have something to say, please, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry.
It's, you said, um, council member Holland, that the historical society is already set up as a five oh one C three.
Correct.
Since it has to concern itself with the historical commission, which is a board appointed by the Hazel Park City Council, I'd like to know why. This is the first time I've heard of it.
Um, actually, we were at the school
Well, okay, I'll ans, I'll let you answer it. It's wrong that I have never heard of the historical society being, being contemplated. It's our business up here.
Okay, well, I can answer that for you very simply. It has been discussed for the last year. We never had a building before. Once we got a building, the, the funding mechanism is what kind of prompted this.
Discussed with who?
The
The five city council people that sit up here. That's who the discussion had to be with.
May I complete my statement? Please, let me answer your question. We have meetings every month, every single month where we discuss it, issues. We've offered to give our agendas and our meeting notes to the city. After two thousand seventeen, there was no interest for it. Our meetings are open to the public. They're well-attended. People can come back and share this. The society, we kind of, when we realized we did not have a valid lease, and we were looking at writing grants, and I'm not talking five hundred to fifteen hundred dollars. I'm talking major grants where we could provide services and activities for children in this district, and in the entire community. We started looking in that, and the one thing that we ran into over and over again was the nonprofit status. The city of Hazel Park, as a municipality, limited us. These were our internal conversations that were held in a public setting. And I'm sorry, I don't talk to you that often, Andy. I see you, what, once a month? I, I'm, I'm not responsible for updating all this. We, we just did this. It's brand new. This is the first council meeting we've had since we addressed the school board.
At any point in time, members from the historical commission are welcome to come to this microphone and update city council on what is happening with their organization. And I have not seen anybody prior to today come update us on this. The reason I'm supporting this motion is because I have ethical concerns about the actions of this organization, and I believe that we need to not only review the historical commission, but we do need to review our policies and procedures with all of our commissions to make sure that everybody is following the procedures that they should be following. However, this particular one, at this current point in time, has caused an extreme amount of problems, and this needs to be resolved immediately while we address the bigger picture, like Mayor Webb.
There is no way to answer this immediately. The lease arrangement was the first step in solidifying the society entering into an agreement with the district. There was nothing to bring forward to council. The historical commission is not dissolved. Nothing's changed with that, how it operates. They will still hold meetings. It's still the same people that have poured their blood, sweat, and tears into this building and the activities. Nothing has changed. I don't understand why everybody thinks some ethical breach has happened.
All right, I just want to get back to, we have a motion on the floor. I, I have a, fine. There's a commissioner.
Jesse Robertson, two through three five three Hoover Avenue. I am a commissioner on the historical commission. I just simply wanted to add a few notes. Um, I can confirm what councillor Holland has said is that at our open meetings, which we have had every month on the third Thursday of the month, with, I believe, the exceptions of technically November, I believe we shifted to December, um, that we have discussed this. One of the big things, and the big reason why is that the option for a five oh C three, five oh one C three allows it to be a booster for the activities of the commission because that means that any donations made to there, such as a, a grant or such, is a, is, you know, a tax write-off, and as a result, it can be a lot more appealing to potential benefactors for a lot of activities. And we see, this is our call, a lot of our other, um, city activities are supported by booster organizations as well. And that has been a significant, um, limitation. And as far as information, as for why it's not brought up, um, the best of my understanding is that what a lot of us commissioners do is to take handling of a lot of work so that not all of the city's business has to be run through the council directly and, you know, overload you at every single meeting. Although, I guess today's meeting is a bit of an overload. And so this has actually been freely available. I believe at least almost every single meeting we've had, there is ac, have actually been citizens who have stuck around and actually, you know, borne witness to our meetings too. So they would be able to ver, you know, um, concur or verify this. Um, so they would be able to ver, you know, um, concur or verify this. And so this has actually been, um, as the best of our understanding of how the various boards and commissions and also see that this has been done accord, in accordance to what the city wishes. Um, and also seems similar to with how activity has gone largely with the other commission I serve on, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. So that was just all I wanted to comment on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jesse. Back to the motion on the floor, a dissension. Do we need a roll call? Do you want to drop the motion? Do you want to let the administration work out the details with the rules and regulations, which I think is the proper way to do this?
I would agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that, um, to, you know, this is a very unprecedented move to, uh, halt the activities of an organization. But, um, there has been a number of inappropriate things that we, that have gone on there. I've attended a Democratic Club meeting there myself, didn't realize really that it was an inappropriate thing. Um, but I think it's a lack of oversight and some inattention on our own, but, um, all of the commissioners, the city council people as well and all the commissioners do need to be fully educated on their proper role because it seems that some are not following that.
Do I have the motion maker drop the motion?
I would be willing to drop the motion. Um, I do want to bring up a point that, um, instead of seeking a separate lease and a removal of the historical commission to become a historical council, um, much like if you're seeking funding, actual funding for programs, you could just create a friends of to do your fundraising as a nonprofit that would run alongside of, just like we do at the shelter.
Well, this is kind of where I want to go with the, hold on. No. I'd like to have the MML come in, give us a break.
If they can.
If they can and give us the proper procedure for the actual rules and regulations and, and also have an idea as to what is the proper way to fund this organization with the society, with the, or with the friends of the, we have friends at the library for years and we had others, other civic, we had other civic organizations, but on the other hand, we had to see where the group that's filed for their society license as to with the state or the feds, how they've worded that whether or not it's going to, what kind of grants they're trying to seek, whether to better make the building a better place, rehab the building, I don't know.
Another concern that I had, which is part of the reason I made the motion to suspend was I know that we had asked for, or the city had asked for, uh, an inventory and in the ordinances, it does stipulate that an inventory is to be done. Um, when that was asked for, the, the city manager was informed that most of the belongings were private, privately owned and that is a concern that as a historical commission, um, that those things might leave the building.
I can answer that right now.
We're not gonna...
No, I, I'm not going to be accused of being a thief and I'm not going to slip my board members.
I don't think, nobody was accusing you to be a thief.
Not at all what I was implying.
That's a hyperbole and ridiculous statement.
The personal items in there are a lot of antiques donated by members of the community and family. There is an inventory. I'm not aware of the city requesting that.
It's on your, it's on your March third, um, your March third.
I spoke with, uh, Rich Robbins after that and you have an inventory there that's right there on your thing.
That's our, Ms. Sullivan, that is our agenda. That's our agenda where we discuss the inventory. It doesn't say that we're turning it over or it was requested by the city. At that point, we were approving forms, forms, fun, exciting stuff that apparently council needs to micromanage. Forms to know where it came from, what the intention is. It's not an inventory that the city requested. That was our agenda.
The city did request.
I did request of Rich Robbins that an inventory be taken. That is when he informed me that several of the items in there were actually privately owned. He indicated several things were owned, uh, by one of the historical commission members and that a lot of it was privately owned. Again, I think this is important that everyone knows who, what, who, who do these community assets belong to?
We have a complete inventory of what actually is the city's and most of the photographs in there, quite frankly, they're copies. All of the original items, there is an inventory list of the city's property and it'll fit into two laundry baskets.
Can we have those items submitted to the next city council meeting?
Absolutely. I can have them emailed out probably tomorrow. You want pictures too?
Can we, uh...
I just, what we should have is an inventory of the possessions in there that belong to the city. This was all, all that I have ever requested and that has been requested of me by council members who have expressed their concerns to me was that a proper use policy for uses unrelated to the historical commission be developed so that this particular building was not used as a clubhouse or, uh, a personal, uh, playground for individual historical commission members.
This level of attention is historic. I'd like to move on, please.
I'm sure you would, madam. However, these are discussions that need to be held and...
We're repeating ourselves.
Uh, you may think that, but I'm telling the council that I need direction as a, uh, administration. What is your pleasure? Based upon what I'm hearing from you, you wish me to continue the dialogue with, uh, the superintendent of schools to bring back a lease with the city of Hazel Park to the Hazel Park City Council to continue to host the Hazel Park Historical Commission Museum. Is that a correct statement?
I believe that was what the...
Okay, could I please have a motion to that effect so I have clear direction as the administration of the city of Hazel Park and I am operating well within the publicly established public policy position of the city of Hazel Park?
Since I made the first and retracted it, I'll gladly make this one. Um, I would like to make a motion to, uh, empower the city administration to continue the working towards, um, and with the Hazel Park School District to a continuation of a lease on the property that the Hazel Park Historical Commission currently sits in, as well as developing protocol standards for all of the current commissions and boards and formally request an opinion of the status of the current lease. That's my motion.
A dissension, discussion, roll call, please.
Support. Yes, sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Okay, I got more new business. The other item I'd like to talk about is, do we have, do we have an update on Pastor Berry's, uh, plan?
I actually did receive a plan. It is not consistent with zoning, but he plans to revise the plan to make it possibly more neighborhood friendly. I will give you guys copies of the plan that he submitted. It is clearly not ready for prime time and nothing that we could consider at this point, but it is head and shoulders, I think, over some of the other, uh, plans that we've seen in the past.
Okay, before we get, before he gets to the end of his six-month, um, leg, I think it's June, should we have him in for a work study and discuss the options in which are viable in his mind and his attorneys as to where they want to pursue this?
Uh, I think, right now, I'm waiting for him to bring in a revised plan. I think that we should, uh, let's see what he brings in and then be happy to set up a meeting maybe sometime in May.
Because I think that he needs to have some idea whether or not the council will accept his plan before his time runs out.
He is evolving. Uh, I hope that, uh, he can bring a plan that you could approve. I'll be happy to share with you what, uh, he has given me. Uh...
I think we need to talk about it as a board after you bring us the plans.
Okay, absolutely.
I think that was my intent. Okay, any other new business we want to bring up? I do want to say thank you for hanging in through our discussion, but that brings us to the communication from department heads. So we have the DPW Director, Tom Jones, Water Superintendent, Tim Young, the Chief of Police, and I think that's all the big guys here. Go ahead, Tom.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Uh, just want to remind everybody, we have Earth Awareness Day coming up May fourth at the, uh, DPW facility. Uh, we encourage residents to bring in all electronics, uh, cell phones, scrap metal, paint. Um, you can also shred your documents. Uh, Sackr will bring their portable shredder to do that. That is also the same day as park spring cleanup and we will also have a free hot dog lunch at the DPW, um, throughout the day. That event's at ten AM to two PM. Again, that's Saturday, May fourth. Um, I want to update on our tree program currently in conjunction with J H Hart. We are trimming and/or removing trees on Harding, Hoover and Hughes. Um, what we're doing this year, so everybody's not surprised when there's work done under their tree, if a tree will be removed, I am leaving a door hanger with a little note of saying what the issue is with the tree. We're also sending a letter to the property owner. Um, you're welcome. Um, sometimes a rental house, the actual property owner might be surprised that his tree is no longer there. So we're trying to do a little extra effort this year, keep everybody informed. Um, one other thing, uh, this Friday will be a pre-construction meeting for the John R project from Eight Mile to I-75. Um, I will have tentative start dates after that and I've been told it could start as soon as next week. Not holding my breath, but it could start that project. I will be putting out a letter or a flyer to each business along John R to inform them of what is coming. We, we have put signage out, uh, as of yesterday, just informing the people driving John R that there will be a project coming this spring. So these are all good things. We're excited about the progress. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we, we've discussed bike lanes for the south end of John R. You and I had had some discussions regarding protected bike lanes and concerns with snow removal. Have you moved anywhere on a decision on that?
Uh, currently, the program is it'll be painted. Um, I know we've talked about delineators and different things like that. Currently, the projects that go with, with the painting, there is additional crosswalks also that we've discussed that are going in. Um, so it will be a work in progress and I think there's room for different improvements as we go.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Tom. Our Water Department Supervisor, Tim Young.
Good evening. Uh, I just wanted to come up and, uh, thank, uh, the mayor and council for the consent agenda number twelve, which was approving our sewer jet camera. Really appreciate it. That's going to help us out immensely in the future, as well as to, uh, thank you on item fourteen for the West Now funding, uh, that we have applied for with the, uh, through the county. And with this, uh, we're going to ask that the residents and business owners, please take a look around their properties for anything that could be holding standing water. It would be a serious breeding ground for possible mosquitoes in the future. Just walk around once a week and just check things out and dump any water out that's, should be standing, that's in, in any type of items, uh, buckets, pots, car tires, that kind of thing are very, um, susceptible to holding water.
Any recommendations for yards that have significant amounts of standing water?
Uh, the best thing would be to try to, uh, level it out. Bring some topsoil in, just level it out so you don't have a low spot at all. Um, maybe consult, uh, a landscaping company that might be able to come in and put some native plants in that might, uh, absorb the water or have some suggestions on what they could do to create possible rain garden of some sort or a better garden system in their yards.
Thank you. Thanks, Tim.
Just have an announcement next week. Neighborhood Watch Tuesday, the sixteenth, seven PM at the high school. Brian Forster is going to have a presentation again on active assailants. Uh, it was very good the first time. He's had some instructions since then. He's working hard on it and, uh, look forward to that. It'd be a good event for people in the public to come to. Uh, the other thing, April, uh, it's a national campaign for distracted driving. Our officers are participating in that. Just means they're out looking for it. Uh, you text, you drive, you pay.
Okay. And I see we have a traffic control order that changes, put a new stop sign in on Russell, Otis?
Yes, that's for north and southbound. Um, there is a stretch from Nine Mile to Pearl where there wasn't any stop signs, so that should slow people down. Also with the added, uh, new park that's going to, well, not new park, but the added, uh...
Renovation.
Renovation to the park. Uh, I think there's going to be a lot more activity there and we need to slow people down.
Are we actually putting the sign right at the corner of Otis, sir?
That's the plan, yes, for north and south.
Um, with that being there, I'd like to see us, uh, with the renovations coming, have a very well-marked and very vibrantly marked intersection there for our crosswalk for our children to the park.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got that back there? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to reiterate what Chee Bukos said about Brian Forster's presentation. I was at the last Neighborhood Watch meeting when he gave it. We had very few people in attendance and it was an outstanding presentation that gave a great deal of valuable information with respect to, uh, how to handle an active assailant situation. I really hope that everybody, if you have the time to make it to that meeting, please make it. It's worth seeing. I'm going to go and I'm going to watch it again because he did such a good job the first time.
Comments from our city attorney, which hasn't been with us in a long time and I want to say thank you to coming tonight this evening, uh, Mr. Schiffman.
Always interesting. I am looking at the...
You sure? Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Klobuchar.
There are many things I could say after tonight's meeting, but I think I will save those comments for another day.
Thank you.
I can simply say that I will always do the very best that I can to protect the interests of the city of Hazel Park. I have served in this position for, uh, over seventeen years and we've accomplished a lot and, uh, the city of Hazel Park is now moving forward in a great direction. And, uh, again, I don't want to fight with anybody, but I want the public to know that I clearly and received from members of council, uh, complaints and concerns about that and that is why I acted. I am grateful for the clear direction that you've given me tonight, which again is all that I have ever asked for, even in that letter. I believe that I can work cooperatively with the school superintendent. We worked well to plan the park. I'm sure we will all work well together to build the park. Uh, this is a team. Uh, I hope to work with the superintendent, with the mayor, with the school board, with the council and yes, with the historical commission to come up with a satisfactory resolution to the situation that heals the wounds and creates a clear and concise path forward for the continuation of a historical museum for the city of Hazel Park that is used as a historical museum.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Councilperson Sullivan.
Um, I want to thank everybody for sitting through this heated debate this evening. I appreciate the discussion on the panel and the advision of ways to better address, um, what we're actually seeking. I think that's great. I'm a newly elected official, um, so I'm learning as I go and I appreciate the, uh, experience of my elders and I say that very kindly on board here with me. Um, for sure. Um, I also wanted to, um, tell everybody that Hazel Park Community Cats had our first drop-off for TNR today. Uh, we successfully trapped three kitties, uh, here in Hazel Park that are now being spayed and neutered and will be ear tipped, vaccinated and released back into their, uh, their neighborhoods with support of feeding and, um, uh, feeding and shelter, um, which will help to reduce, uh, I'm also currently Hazel Park Community Cats is working in conjunction with, um, Mulberry, am I going to say it right? Mulberry, Mulberry Hill Wildlife, um, to, uh, trap and, uh, support, neuter, return their colony as well, um, to help prevent more litters being born. Um, so spring has sprung, babies come from kitt, from kitties, kitties can get pregnant. So spring has sprung. Babies come from kitties. Kitties can get pregnant as soon as they give birth. If you need assistance with kitties in your neighborhood, please reach out. Facebook page is Hazel Park Community Cats. That's it. Spay and neuter.
Thank you. Councilperson Holland.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. What a historic evening. I want to briefly reiterate a couple of things that we take our role as Hazel Park Historical Commissioners incredibly serious. There's been no guidance, even when we've made subtle requests for some guidance. We've basically been left to run ourselves. And we've tried to follow the charter, the one page that it's on. And we've taken some steps. We do some things that I don't think other boards and commissions have to consider. We don't have alcohol in the building. We have no tobacco on, on the property. There's no drugs, no firearms. We try and mirror the school policies so the building is safe. All of our board members participate in iChat through the school district because we do have children that come through the building. When we looked into the society, again, it was a funding mechanism. Nothing devious or sneaky, simply a funding mechanism to help us grow the museum, offer additional programs, and make physical improvements, real improvements to the, the actual building, which was constructed in 1940. That baby is still in great shape, but there's some things that need to be done and we want to make it more efficient energy-wise and a model for the community. Where maybe people can come in and see solar, can see wind, and can see just better things. The friends of the society or the commission was looked into and it just wasn't feasible. The lease option was the issue and that is why we looked into the society and chose to form one. And on March 18th, which wasn't too terribly long ago, is when we petitioned the school board to entertain the option of, of entering into a lease with us. Again, nothing, nothing sneaky or nothing devious. We haven't met as a commission here to have this conversation come up. And I've not spoken to Mr. Klobuchar. So, you know, it is what it is. I guess finally I'd like to remind everyone that our spring vaccination clinic with animal control is going to be a little bit different this year. The mobile clinic, they're stretched thin. So we are going to be utilizing services for vaccinations at All About Animals in Warren. That is the primary wellness center that we use at the pound right now. So it'll be Saturday, May 18th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And the address is 23451 Pine Wood, but most folks will know it's just our side of Mound Road and just north of, just north of Nine Mile Road. And they have a big purple sign. So for Hazel Park residents only that day, so if you have a Hazel Park pet, $10 rabies and distemper, $20 for a heartworm test for dogs, for canine, and $20 microchip for any pets. And again, that is just for Hazel Park residents. And the clerk has made it possible for one of their staff members to be there on the check-in portion of it, where if all you need is a license, you can come in with your proof of rabies certificate and you can get a Hazel Park pet license there. And I think the tentative prices are for one, two, and three years, $5, $10, $15. So save a few bucks and it's, it's a good thing to do. And I, I just encourage everyone, if your pet is not microchipped, that is the quickest way for the volunteers and the ACO to get your animals home. And thank you all for coming out tonight. Oh, one more thing. Let's see, where did we go? Ms. Haddon, thank you so much for stepping up and, and offering some advice on, on an issue we were discussing and welcome.
Councilwoman Kirill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Want to send, we've said before Hazel Park is a city that relies on its volunteers a great deal. The volunteers of the boards and the commissions. So putting out another call for volunteers, stay tuned. It's June 10th is the build date, the start of the build date for the park, for the park equipment at Scout McPherson Park. There's a lot of planning that'll go on ahead of that time, but we're going to need a lot of hands on deck starting June 10th for the build week. As evidenced by the passion expressed up here this evening, many people, everybody loves their city of Hazel Park. So if you love somebody, tell them. If you have children, hug them and tell them you love them every day. I want to thank everybody for coming out. Do we need an exec session?
No.
All right. Watch out for the bicyclists. I rode 19 miles yesterday.
Mayor Protem.
So I want to thank everyone for coming out and actually still seeing, I think, at least half of the group still here. I want to let everybody know the Hazel Park Art Fair is still taking applications. So the Hazel Park Arts Council recently moved the location of their meeting to Color Ink Studio, a business here in the city. And I just want to thank Eric, the owner of that studio, for really accepting us because ever since we've moved our location out of the very tiny break room, our attendance has significantly grown. A lot more artists are coming out realizing they're not alone and that we have services for them, support for them, gallery space for them. A lot of things happening in the city with the art. And maybe the board members will be mad at me, maybe not. But I'm really excited to just share early, we have finally made some progress on our mural initiative. I hope everybody in the city is happy, but we've got some impressive opportunities coming forward for artists to put up some, some murals in the city at our gateways. So as we have more information about that, we'll be sharing that with, with the community to, to see what's going on and possibly participate. And since I didn't say it, I'd like to reiterate that the municipal system of finance is broken.
Thank you. Thank you.
Fundamentally broken.
You, thank you for saving me.
I was trying to see...
I, I, how could I have forgot to announce that Michigan system of municipal finance is fundamentally broken? Thank you.
He, he did miss it.
Because we've been hearing it for 20 years.
He did miss it, but...
But anyways, thank you. Thank you. I'd like to say thank you for coming out this evening and I also would like to say thank you for introducing yourselves to the council, Tanya Bowers and Nadine Haddon. And thank you for sticking around. I'm sure this facilitated meeting is very exciting. But to recap, we're starting the roads. We approved some more bonds tonight. I think we can all agree that our state cannot figure out how they're going to fund the road repairs, but we have here. Even though it's going to hurt us for a bit, we figured out how to fund them. And I think that shows that we are able to better manage than those idiots in Lansing. Okay, hate to say it, but it's pretty much they don't know how to work together.
Well, duh.
Whether or not we all don't agree on everything, as you well noticed. So I believe, you know, when it comes down push to shove, how we're able to better manage our funding and balance our budget is what it boils down to. Politics aside, that's what the ultimate goal is for any board in this city. So with that being done, I, you know, I'd like to go back to the other side of it. What keeps us together in this town? Fundraisers, community events, like the park rebuilding, our park in June. The 30th of May Memorial Event, our parade. You know, now I hear we're going to possibly have a bluegrass celebration. Well, I hear that, but see, somebody don't tell me about it. So I don't want to get all upset. But we need to have these events to better keep our socialization together. And I've always said up here, the demise of our morality is the desocialization of our communities. And having the socialization between us all is really the strongest key of keeping our Hazel Park together. With that being said, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. I won't talk anymore. Have a good evening.